I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck's City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, June 5th. If the clerk could please call the rule.
Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncy.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
White.
You have a fork.
Any agenda changes, additions or deletions? All right, any guest speakers this evening? Or this afternoon? All right. Moving on to public comment on agenda items only. If anyone would like to come to the podium, who's in the room? All right, is there anyone online who would like to speak on agenda items only? All right, we'll move on to our discussion items for today. Item 6A, the proposal for planning of Maple Street improvements. Ryan.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. You are all aware that Maple Street needs some work, right? We have a water main underneath that's had several issues and certainly the road condition is in a failing state. And certainly it's getting beat up even more right now with increased traffic with the roundabout construction. And so, as you recall, we were kind of on a multiple parallel path to try to gather some funding for this particular project. The city's applied for a grant for state water, our drinking water revolving loan fund dollars. We've applied for a category B M.D. grant to help with a portion of the cost. But we, this is a two and a half million dollar project and is really needed as well. So we, we do have some fund balance, but we want to try to supplement that to help get this project done. In the meantime, this project is going to take considerable amount of engineering work to tee it up and then have it ready to go. And so your city engineer has prepared the attached proposal to kind of begin that work. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Boxey to kind of go through what that proposal contains.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. You teed it up pretty well. The water main replacement, the asphalt replacement are things that we know about. There's a number of different things that may or may not be included in the project. So this proposal, we don't always do a planning stage proposal for, you know, our road and utility type projects. But this one has enough unknowns that we think it's going to be time well spent figuring out exactly what we're going to be designing. Some of those things that may or may not be included, I'll kind of run through them. They're listed in the proposal there. The well field looping, the city's wells, or at least the two that are located within the city limits are located just off Maple Street, west side of Maple Street. And then there's a loop that connects Maple Street to the wells, then back to the kind of the back area of the high school. That water main is, we think it's the same vintage as the water main on Maple Street. And it's just one of those critical pieces of water main that's, you know, if you get a break there, it causes a little more disruption than a break somewhere else in the system. So that's on the table for discussion incorporating into Maple Street project. Water service separation is something we've talked about a few times over the past few years. We discovered, oh, two or three years ago, that one of the water services on Maple Street actually connects to the private water main on Old Mill Apartments. The scope there would be working with that private property owner to get that connected to the, to the main so that they're not connected through private main. Probably some kind of a cost sharing arrangement for that work. Stormwater management, most of you, I think, have kind of been up to speed on some of the conversations about the city's stormwater outlet at Maple and Mason Street. Some development has occurred in the past 10 to 15 years upstream of that, causing some concerns with bank erosion downstream. So this would really be geared towards trying to find some way to slow that release, mitigate some of the development that's occurred historically and in moving forward. Based on, we prepared a study a year or two ago now, so we'd be looking at all those options as part of this study and kind of narrowing in on what that would look like, what would we be designing as part of this project. Cross culvert improvements, there's several cross culverts under Maple Street that again are kind of unknowns. We would do an in-depth look at each of those and decide whether they warrant replacement as part of our study work so that we can kind of program that into the design effort. Sanitary sewer repairs, we feel pretty confident that there's some, but fairly limited repairs that we'd want to do as we reconstruct the road on top. So we would go through that information that was collected back about five or six years ago and just revisit that, make sure we're catching everything that needs to be caught. Seepage repair on the opposite side of Blue Star Highway, south side of Blue Star Highway. That approach there has been kind of seasonally leaking, basically groundwater coming up through the surface there. Potentially, we would just incorporate that into, if we're doing this much work on Maple Street, that seems like something we'd want to consider doing some kind of additional underdrain than what's been done historically to try and clean that up. And then sidewalk, non-motorized is kind of the elephant in the room for Maple Street and others. But figuring out what that might look like, going down the same paths that we've gone on Park Street. Is it wide and shoulders? Is it a separate sidewalk? Is it a path of some kind or anything in between? So those are, those are kind of some of the things we'd be looking at as part of the study, trying to quantify the cost, the impacts, various things like that, so that we can kind of narrow in on what Maple Street would look like as we launch into a more formal design process later on. Happy to entertain any and all questions along those lines.
All right, who has questions?
Yeah, Mayor Stan, good afternoon. Welcome, everybody. John, thanks for the report. A couple of questions on this. One is more of a general question in your experience with the city, why we haven't gone to this next step now of actually doing a study, which I agree with the concept to get more information in front of us. I'm just kind of curious from your experiences, engineer, if you can choose to answer the question or not, maybe it's a political answer. But why haven't we done this yet? Just one of my questions.
We kind of reserved this step for projects that have a little more of an unknown. Just looking at the most recent work we've done on East West Tack and Taylor, that was really more of an asphalt replacement project with some stormwater improvements. We had a pretty good understanding of what that project looked like when we went into it. Not that there wasn't thought and consideration given to it, but it wasn't, you know, a formal process like this. A little bit easier to kind of figure out what we're designing. And that's, that's been the case with a lot of the city's projects over the years. We've done this step either separate from or as part of design in some other projects, certainly. This is just a little, little bit different, a lot more pieces and parts that may, may or may not be incorporated.
Yeah, thank you. And so this will be the entire length from just south of the north replacement at North Street all the way down to Blue Star and across Alligan, correct?
Yeah, potentially. And one of the things we've talked about and has been mentioned before is do we do this in phases? Or do we do this all in one, one project? That would be something we'd look at as part of this as well, how we want to launch it.
Okay, so essentially tying this back in the capital improvement plan, we've identified what is about a $2.3 million total investment based on current knowledge. The study will give us more information as to whether that estimate's high, low, or right on the mark, right?
Absolutely. Yep. That's one of the biggest parts of this is trying to put a more formalized number to it.
Yeah, thank you. And then, and then ultimately what this will provide us is going to be a roadmap that we as a council can study and say, okay, can we bite off the entire project? Or is it going to be, have to be done in bits and pieces, you know, depending on the financial wherewithal of the city to be able to do this, you know, out of our general, out of our reserve fund as opposed to having to go to a bond or any other financing alternative? Or the grant for that matter, too, that also may direct some of this.
Yeah, certainly. I should have mentioned, we do have a couple of irons in the fire for some outside funding for Maple Street. One of them is the DWSRF project through Eagle. That would fund the water main replacement and then restoration of the road. Some of the other things I mentioned would be kind of outside that, but probably would get done in conjunction with. The other one is the M.D.'s category B application that we'll be submitting here soon, council, just to approve the resolution for that. So depending on the results of that, that might direct us one way or another, too.
Thank you, John. I'm in support of the study. I think this is obviously a priority for the city.
Just, just, you know, I think there's a lot of families that live on Maple Street. There's a couple of housing projects there, too, and a lot of families. I don't know if we can afford it, but boy, do I like the idea of putting a sidewalk in there. I think it would be much needed. Like I said, there's lots of families and kids going down Maple, even when, even if Maple is in perfect condition. It's just not really a safe place for kids to be on the road, would like to see us move forward with a sidewalk. But I would also like to encourage a meeting with people that live on Maple Street to let them know what that means, so that, you know, we will have to take down trees and things like that. And it would be nice to have, you know, some kind of letter or something going out to the folks to let them know when we're going to have that on our agenda when we move in that. I mean, it might be a year from now, but when we get to that point, just so, just so that everybody knows what's going on.
I agree.
I agree with Councilman Muncy. I like the idea of integrating non-motorized options in all of these types of projects to better connect the city. I mean, you know, how much time did we spend at our last meeting talking about parking and the trouble we have with, you know, too many cars in the summer? And the conflicts between cars and both on foot or on bikes? So yeah, I'm pleased that's in there as well.
Anyone else, Holly?
Yeah, this is a no-brainer, I think, you know.
Any other questions? All right, John, thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 6B, capital, water capital improvement fee. On this. What page is that on, Ryan?
Six is my memory.
Great. All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So a topic that I think the council's kind of touched on in past meetings and a topic that, you know, it's always a challenging discussion to have as we talk about fees, especially for our water-related infrastructure. But it's, this is an important conversation to have and then go from here. So it's just kind of a bit of history here back in 2001. Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy had sent essentially enforcement letter to Cal Lake and the city and Douglas and Township and said, hey, you really need to have a kind of a water operations agreement. And you really should have asset management plans for the water system assets that are located within your jurisdiction. And so the Cal Lake and the municipalities agreed and essentially agreed to a corrective action plan that involved negotiating a water systems operations agreement, which is still in the works, as well as, hey, we will submit an asset management plan for our jurisdictions' assets. And so that, that work was done last year and back in September. You as a city council reviewed the asset management plan and associated capital improvement plan and approved that, that submittal to Eagle. And at that time, you likely recall some discussions, you know, were had with Baker Tilly, who's kind of a water rate consultant, who took a look at, you know, the capital improvement plans, which police and banner brink showed, you know, over the next, you know, you know, four or five years, we're looking at potentially, you know, $11 million in water system improvement needs. And we really don't have a dedicated funding source for that right now, other than, you know, general fund dollars. As part of that, their recommendation was that the city certainly apply for other funding options, you know, grants, state revolving loan fund dollars, and we're doing that. And part of a couple of scenarios that they ran kind of showed, hey, if the city were successful in receiving those types of dollars, that would, you know, certainly fund a chunk of your improvements potentially, but you still have a shortfall here. And you're, they're really recommending that you implement a water capital improvement related fee to replace water mains that are aging, as well as, you know, meeting the lead and copper rule for service line replacements going forward.
Quick question.
Sure.
Remind me from our last meeting, our neighbors have already done this or are doing this?
So you're exactly right. So Sagatuck Township for some time has had this type of a fee on the water bills. And then the city of the village of Douglas went through the same process that we did last year. And Baker Tilly is the same consultant and Baker Tilly had also recommended a similar fee to them. And back in January, they've actually implemented this same, the same fee that we're discussing today. Not the same amount necessarily, but the same type of fee. So as we look at the need, again, we talked about it, right, we have aging infrastructure. It's going to need to be replaced. We don't have a dedicated funding source. And then certainly there's environmental compliance, right? We want good, clean drinking water, but we also have lead and copper rules to work through as well. So as we look at a capital improvement fee dedicated to, you know, water system improvements, it's a user pay principle. It provides a dedicated funding source and it provides some long-term financial stability to know that, hey, we have a dedicated amount of funds for this water work that is needed and coming and needs to be done. So Baker Tilly proposed kind of a, did a couple of different scenarios. You know, first scenario was starting, you know, at a higher charge per month, per meter equivalent unit. And then, and then kind of each year increasing it by a dollar for several years. The second scenario option was to kind of start out with a lower meter equivalent fee and then look at increases, you know, at around $3 per year for the next several years. So a meter equivalent is essentially per Cal Lake, you know, homeowner, typically a homeowner that has a meter that's, you know, 5/8 in size. And that covers 84 and a half percent of the customers within the city. And then as the meter size goes up, you're paying a higher proportion of the fee. So their recommended fee with scenario two was a $20 per month capital improvement fee. I've reached out to Cal Lake, you know, they've indicated that, that once, you know, if it's approved by the city council, it's going to take them a few months to implement that. And then they'd be looking at kind of remitting these dollars to the city on a quarterly basis. Baker Tilly estimated that, you know, in the first year, it could bring in $331,000. And then obviously we'd have to take those dollars and build up funds to do a larger project. And as you just heard, you know, Maple Street alone is a two and a half million dollar project, you know, probably half of that's, you know, water main. Baker Tilly, I think, showed you on the attached reports that, you know, your, at least last year, your fund balance that you really had available for these water improvements is at a half a million. So you can kind of see the shortfall when you're looking at 11 and a half million dollars worth of work over the next several years and a half million dollars in fund balance, you know. You know, we got to figure out how we're going to pay for these things. So, you know, these funds would, would be, you know, gathered by Cal Lake and then remitted back to the city on a quarterly basis and kept in a completely separate fund. It has to be, if you're collecting a fee, it has to be used for that purpose. We wouldn't be able to use these funds for any other purpose at all, but for simply water infrastructure related improvements. Reviewed this with legal as far as the legalities of it and the process. You know, essentially, you know, there's a couple of things that we need to update with our, your water ordinance to kind of base this on meter equivalent versus residential equivalent. And then, once those ordinance updates are, were to be approved by you, then you'd be able to actually approve this fee as part of a fee schedule update. So it's perfect timing because it looks like Mr. Campbell from Baker Tilly is on as well for any questions that you have. And I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
The numbers that we were talking about before, I thought we were brought in the 16 million range. And the information that I'm looking at here is in the 11 million range. Did something change?
Is that related to the state revolving loan fund? The recent application to the
The wire fix was going to be $16 million, but I don't know if it was.
Yeah, and maybe John can take a look, maybe while we're continuing to discuss. That might have been on your state revolving loan fund application and, you know, putting even more work on that application to say, hey, like
It would have been, yeah.
Yeah, because the capital improvement plan is part of the asset management plan, you know, looked out the next four or five years. John and his team might have included a broader set there, I guess.
Yeah, you're, you're exactly right, Ryan. I think we're looking at the difference between five years and 20-year horizon.
Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mayor. So I think that my, well, I don't think my perspective on this is this is something that has to be done. It's just a fashion, it's a matter of how we're going to get it done and how much financial responsibility are we going to place on the end users? This, so my question is, what are alternatives? I mean, I see, and I'll have to go back and read, reread the Baker Tilly report, but, you know, there's different options. Do nothing at all. And that's not, in my opinion, an option, but that's obviously always the first option, just don't do anything at all. And then you're going to find yourself in financial straits, right? Two is, do we have another financing alternative as opposed to, you know, putting on a fee to everybody's annual or monthly bill? That has some, and I think council member Anderson had expressed some concern. There's some people in our community that $240 more a year is going to be a stretch. So we need to think and be confident that we can accommodate those people that may have that particular constraint. Also is, you know, are there other alternatives financing this? I think about, you know, when I was on a condo board back in the day, when we'd have major capital projects, we'd ask the, we'd ask the people that lived there, we'd say, you have a choice. We can either do a special assessment for a period of time over a period of months or years, whatever, or you can do a lump sum payment to bring it to where we need to go. Now, I don't know from the city if we even have that opportunity, but, you know, I just think about, okay, how can we get to where we need to be? And we estimate 331,000 and change a year is going to be generated by this approach. We need to get to that 11 million and change ultimately over the course of time. So you can do the math, see how long it's going to take to get there. So this is not in perpetuity. But my question is, what are, are there other alternatives to financing this?
Yeah, and I'll turn it over to Andy in a second to maybe fill in any gaps that I don't cover. I think there's, you know, well, part of it's upfront is probably more of a philosophical discussion, right? Are you looking at wanting this on, on property taxpayers or you're again charging, yeah, like you said, the end user of the water proportional kind of basis to at least their meter size and how they use their water? You know, I mean, like, we all know today, right, with property taxes, like, you know, you own the home for several years. You know, like, you're paying your taxable value in comparison to what maybe the value is worth is maybe a little bit different. Whereas this is actually kind of proportional to, you know, at least your meter, you know, meter equivalent. So so certainly, if you believe that, that, you know, I think there's still going to be some, you know, well, certainly there's options to look at, you know, bonding, but then, you know, I do want to pay for that, right? Is there a dedicated, you know, fund that's, that had fees for water or are you, you know, going to do that in a way that, that, you know, is on the property taxpayer? So I think that's kind of what the philosophical, you know, discussion that you have to have first. I mean, certainly there's, there's options to pay for this type of work, but it's a matter of who do you charge?
Yeah, and to me, it gets back to the fundamental question here is that we don't have a choice but to get the money in the bank to take care of these issues that we project, correct? So two is, what are the options? And I think that's the case that has to be made to the people who are going to be paying the fees is to, you know, we don't have a choice, but here are the options that we have. And here's the direction we think this should go based on, you know, our understanding of the community and people's ability to be able to fund this, et cetera. I think that's very important in situations like this to make sure that we make that case very clear that we are not in a position where we can choose to not do this, but we have options and a way that we can do it. And, and, you know, see what people think.
Holly.
Well, and if I could just add to that, I, you know, at least the scenarios that Baker Tilly provided you is kind of a, you know, it's a combination approach in the sense that this fee is not going to cover all of it. I mean, they're counting on, hey, hopefully you get some state revolving loan fund, you know, dollars, you know, for a portion of this. So the fee ended up itself, it was now kind of in the scenarios that they ran, you know, going to be the sole basis, obviously using some of the fund balance that you have now. So, you know, I, but I think it does still get back to the, you know, you know, this is an enterprise fund, essentially kind of a business-related fund, you know, providing water to the, to folks. You know, the water system should pay, you know, its way and fees, you know, and the charges should, you know, kind of be at a, at a rate that, that, you know, pays for that particular system. I mean, your general fund dollars have a lot of other, you know, a lot of other, you know, you have a lot of other needs that your, where your general fund dollars are needed. I mean, discipline, like bonding and paying from general fund dollars, I mean, would be, I mean, you can't raise, you know, your operational tax rate anymore. I mean, that's, that's capped out. So, I mean, certainly, you know, you could look at, you know, bonded project paid for with property tax dollars. And Andy can kind of speak to some of those options, too. But maybe Andy could kind of touch on why their recommendation was to maybe implement this fee and why, at least from a rate perspective, they think it's, it's wise.
Can I ask a quick question? Was there any thought at all given to, like, the way that we've got it right now? It's almost like if you're going to build a sidewalk, well, you've got X amount of frontage and so you're going to get charged this. Was there any thought given to adding it on to the usage? So if you're a house that uses 1,000 gallons of water a day versus a house that uses 100 gallons of water a day, you get 10x the charge that, you know what I mean? Is that, is that an option or is it really, since it's hardware? I mean, I certainly understand the reason for this approach, like, you have a house, that house has a water access, just like any other house. But the other way of looking at it is putting it on the actual user of the water. If the butler has a 5-inch, you hear, I mean, I think I used the analogy before, like, Gregory living by himself is going to have the same bill as, you know, a restaurant or somebody who's a brewery.
Yeah, I take a lot of cold showers.
So I'll turn it over to Andy on this. My suspicion is that he's going to say, well, I mean, we have to run the water main there regardless of how much you're using.
I understand. Yeah, I certainly understand. I certainly understand this approach, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I think it's a fair question. Andy, you want to touch on that?
Yep. Hey, everybody. Good to see everybody again here. Got a few things to talk about, so I'll touch on that one since it's kind of most recent here. So we, we did look at a couple of different options. There's meter equivalents, ready-to-serve charges, it's commonly called. It's called an MEU charge in the authority world. It's the same thing. It is based on the meter size of the household. Typically, like, your brewery or something is going to have a larger meter, so they would pay more per month. But it depends on what meter size is going to the house. But your houses are typically going to have 5/8 inch meters in your communities and every resident would pay the same exact fee. We did look at a couple of different options, I will say, like, I, from my standpoint, the city should expect that this $20 does not solve all the infrastructure needs. So this was basically a first charge to kind of introduce the system expenses that are actually going to be needed in the next few years. There's also a consideration that we are still in the depths of working through a lot of different aspects with the authority. It's not going so well right now, to be perfectly honest. And the MEU charge is familiar territory to them. And that's how Sagatuck Township realistically does their charge. It's how the city of the village of Douglas is going to do their charge. So that was kind of just the first blush on how to keep it easy in terms of authority billing as well. But we can also look at other options that the city so chooses now or in the future. I do want to just remind everybody that this would, this would just be for the city's distribution chart or distribution system. So everybody that is currently on the water system still pays the Kalamazoo Lake Authority charges currently. That is set up as an MEU charge plus commodity. The, the reason that we are looking to do a MEU charge fee going forward and same with the other communities is that the system has not been maintained and the expenses are racking up. So the capital improvements are getting very, very expensive. We do need to maintain those going forward. And that, that really has come down to a lot of questions about who owns what on the discussions from the authorities. So there's been a lot of that in the past 10, 20 years about who is maintaining what, who's paying for what. I will say, like, even though that we're kind of in the middle of, like, some difficult, like, discussions right now, to me, in the way that the things are going right now, like, that line is pretty clear in terms of that side of the discussions with the authority on what the city is going to be responsible for in terms of maintaining your own distribution system, which will essentially mean every single water main inside the city limits, along with the service lines, if you have any lead and copper rule issues, that would be on the city's water fund as well. Traditionally, the city has paid for these expenses out of general fund when they've come up. So if, if a water main breaks, the city has traditionally come up with that out of the general fund and/or connection charges. So there is a small balance in the water fund right now that has been from historic connection charges that have come into the fund. But it's not anywhere near what's needed going forward. So that, it is planning going forward about what is necessary to bring in revenues, knowing that there is a lot of capital improvements coming up that will be necessary. The final thing I want to do touch on is, one of the council members asked to The final thing I want to do touch on is, um, one of the council members asked about, uh, a potential for an assessment. And I just want to kind of talk about how in, in municipal world, special assessments can only be done on, uh, when you're talking about water sewer, special assessments can only be done when, during new connections. So the municipal rule for water and sewer is you have to show added value if you're going to assess. So added property value, if you're going to assess the property owner, if they're already connected to the system for water sewer. And let's say you, you give them a new water main in front of their house. That does not increase the value of the property. An old water main versus the new water main does not increase the added, the value of the property. So thus you cannot assess, do a special assessment for that. So, um, from our perspective, it really comes down to, I mean, we could, we could look at, uh, MEU, like ready to serve charge. We can look at commodity charge, which is based on usage. We can look at both. But it does have to come in, in, in the form of a user fee because of how state law is set up for the city.
Go ahead, Gregory.
Um, I, and thank you Helen Baldwin for doing the numbers and seeing that we're not getting quite where we need to be with justice assessment alone. Just curious, um, can we expect, if, if for some reason we're not getting any outside monies or anything, can we expect these fees to perhaps go up if we need to?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought you, that's what I thought you were saying, that, you know, this is kind of like a, 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 a introduction of what's to come.
Yeah, if I can, um, we are, if you look at that scenario, we are anticipating that if, this was based on implementation during this cycle, but this fiscal year cycle, sorry. We had planned on the initial fee being 20, rising to 38 over the next six years.
And then, and then also, oh, I'm sorry. Um, also, um, once we have those funds, do we continue collecting these charges or does this go off their bill?
Uh, no, it has to be, um, expected that, uh, these charges will always be necessary forevermore, really. Because the system is, and what John is telling you, I mean, like John's fully correct. And like, what's the five year plan, what's the 20 year plan? But the reality is like the ci, the city, like the system has been built and now it's to the point where it has deteriorated enough to where the fixes are absolutely necessary. And you have to plan now that we're in the cycle of a system where we've already, we've hit, we've, we've gone away from the, where the, the system is new enough to not have to have this charge. Now it's really necessary for now and forevermore to have this charge to maintain what we can. The $20 isn't going to cover, I mean, as, as Ryan talked about, it brings in a little over 300,000 a year. I mean, that, if you, if we do debt or something that, that could help, but it's not going to pay for 11 million, 15 million, 20 million right away. So it's, it should be expected that this fee will be implemented and expected going forward.
Go ahead, Holly. First of all, I mean, it's, it's somewhat appalling that we're in this space, that the can has been kicked down the road this long. So I'm glad we're going to tackle it. I mean, not that we have a choice, but, um, and I think this is another example where we need to really get out in front with communications and set people's expectations and as simply as possible, kind of explain sort of how we got here. You know, what our plan is, you know, kind of walk through the, the, the details. Um, and maybe even, I mean, think about how we can answer questions and simplify. I mean, a lot of this is pretty technical, but simplified enough so that we can educate people along the way. And, and just hope and pray our successors, um, you know, I mean, we, you can't in a house or a water system in a city, you just can't keep deferring maintenance until things fall apart. It's crazy.
Anybody seen the, uh, coverage out of Atlanta the past few days? Five days under an emergency boil order. I mean, uh, it, it, we're not unique, even in small towns. I mean, towns throughout Michigan have been deferring maintenance on aging infrastructure. Frankly, this is the best proposal I've seen to date. I think it's the fairest I've seen to date. I'm in support of moving on this quickly. We are lucky in that there is a lot of infrastructure money. The state's got infrastructure money that's, that's historic and it's, in its size. The, the issue we have though is, um, we do not meet the criteria of a lot of the more underserved, traditionally, uh, underserved communities in Michigan. So we're going to have a lot of competition for, for grants, loans, not as much, but also competition for loans. Uh, so I, I do think we need to do, take this as a matter of urgency. It, it's frankly, it's long overdue, uh, this action. So I think we need to take it immediately.
Oh, I'm sorry, real quick, and this is something that we're going to vote on and, and move forward with. Of course, it's going to take about two to three months before it's implemented on bills. But I have to agree with, uh, Ms. Anderson. We really need to learn how to communicate better, um, and make sure that folks are ready for this.
And not just as part of people's water bills, you know, so that, go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, I think one of the subtleties here, and Mr. Campbell touched on it. Thank you, by the way, for the explanation and the assessment approach. I think one of the subtleties here, and you spoke to it, is that there's been a continuous discussion in these communities between the township, the village of Douglas and the city on who owns what. And the fact that that's still a contentious discussion, um, I'm glad it's being had. I know how difficult it is, John or Andy, I've been in those rooms for those discussions in past years. But I think that'll be a key thing for us to communicate to the community and say, look, wait a minute. Some people may say, well, why isn't Cal Lake just check the rates to cover this? Well, this isn't what this is about. This is about the infrastructure that's within the city limits that we own, which is still being determined, right? At a final point, we don't know quite that, what that is yet. So Cal Lake has its own responsibilities to maintain its services of delivery to us. The clinic, you know, the cleanness of the water, the processing of the sewage. But ultimately, they cannot bring the money forward for us to take care of our infrastructure. So I think that's going to be another message we have to make very clear because those subtleties are things that most people don't. Well, doesn't it all, doesn't it all get owned by, isn't it all owned by Cal Lake? And it's, that's not true. It's not all owned by Cal Lake, so just another.
Infrastructure system and yeah.
Yeah, so.
Anyone else? All right, Andy, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody. And just for next steps here, it's council's knowledge, I mean, I think, what I understand from the conversation today is that there's kind of direction to kind of move forward with preparing the necessary ordinances and resolutions. So I'll work with legal counsel to, to start that process and, um, and making sure that we also have clear understanding with Cal Lake about, uh, you know, collecting and, you know, and the dollars coming back to the city on it and that sort of thing as well.
And how soon is this? I mean, this is going to take some time before we can, um, you know, put it before all of us as a vote, but also some time to get the communication out to the public.
Yep, yep, another key piece, I have a, a, a number of notes and we'll make sure that, uh, yep, we prepare kind of an FAQ or one pager for folks to understand, certainly.
And, and also, um, you say Douglas and the township have already implemented this, right? Are the rates pretty close to what we're, what we're asking for?
I'm not exactly sure what Sagatuck's like, Andy might know. I think Douglas just did $15 per meter of public units, so.
Yeah, there, I will, uh, say Sagatuck Township has traditionally been lower, but they're also in, they've had that fee since they started the system though, I will say. So they took a different approach and had, have had this fee basically since the inception. They also have a much newer system though, so their fees current, like their improvements right now are, are less than the two cities.
They were smart for doing it earlier though.
One small point is on the asset management team, it still has the former city manager on there for F and B, just so you know. For the context.
Yeah, that was.
Page 17.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else, are we good to move on? All right, moving on then to, uh, item six D, no, item six C, draft agreement to permit temporary access to Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area for weather research activities. It's on page 39 in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, some folks at, uh, Colorado University are, are looking to do some weather, weather research that involves, um, essentially a, a drone gathering all kinds of different, uh, pieces like temperature and humidity and pressure and winds to study, uh, weather patterns in the area. And, and, and I'll turn it over to a gentleman in a second that can explain the, the work a lot better than I can. But, uh, essentially they've looked at different options on, on where they could, uh, conduct this research and areas that they could, you know, use the drone and take off and land. And, uh, initially they were looking at the, the North Shore and, and unfortunately weren't able to, to kind of come to, uh, get an approval, uh, from those folks. They were, you know, initially reached out to the city wondering about Oval Beach and considering that, you know, the time of year and the amount of folks that we have out there and the amount of beach that's needed, that, that also wasn't, wasn't a possibility. But, um, um, when, when staff met with, with, uh, with, uh, the, the requesters, you know, thought maybe the Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area might be a, a possibility, um, less, less foot traffic. The, the way it's been explained to us is that this isn't going to be impactful to, you know, any vegetation in the area. The drone doesn't really have much noise. You know, there'd be, you know, kind of setting up a tent, uh, for the day for their operations and taking off and landing at, at different points. But otherwise, we're going to be real impactful. So we did a little bit of research, uh, as far as, you know, kind of the, um, uh, restrictions that are, are placed on, on the Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area to see if there was any, um, like use restriction or something like that would prohibit this, this type of activity and, and didn't see something immediately. Had legal counsel review those documents as well. Uh, and then University of Colorado proposed a kind of a, an agreement to, um, allow for this, this work to occur, uh, in July. And so, uh, actually at your, your desk, we, there was a couple more changes since your packet went out. University of Colorado's, um, uh, legal team had reviewed our, our attorney's red lines. And essentially they're, they're more related to, um, some, some state law prohibitions in Colorado as far as indemnification. And so there was some kind of modified language that was proposed along those lines that, that Mr. Witty's reviewed and, and doesn't have, um, concerns with. So it's all right, uh, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Ice, uh, who was on, uh, your Zoom call to kind of explain a little bit more about their, their project and answer any questions that you may have.
Yep, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Good evening, I guess, for you. Thanks for taking a few minutes here, uh, to help us review this potential use of our aircraft to study weather patterns in the area. As Ryan mentioned, we've been in contact about this and we are working together with a few different teams. The, the leader of this project is actually at Central Michigan University. His name is Dr. Jason Keeler. And, uh, together with Dr. Keeler, as well as some teams at the University of Illinois, Texas Tech, and the University of Nebraska, we're planning to deploy a variety of assets to Michigan to better understand the interactions between coastal circulation. So the, the lake breeze and the marine layer that sits over the lake and the development of thunderstorms and other impactful weather over Michigan. And, um, this project is scheduled to take place this July. And as was mentioned, we've been trying our best to find a good place to conduct some of our, flight operations that the University of Colorado is responsible for. And, uh, this particular area seems to be the most promising that we've found. So that's why we're in front of you today. I'm happy to answer questions about what it is we're measuring, how we're measuring it, the aircraft and anything else. It's probably most efficient, uh, use of your time to have you ask those questions rather than me giving an extended overview of everything.
Okay, anyone have questions?
Yeah, I do, Mayor Stanton, thank you. Listen to that Dutch name, I wish I could pronounce it correctly. Yeah, welcome to our meeting. So a couple of things, I, I, I'm very curious about, uh, I would like to hear some explanation about what you're actually measuring. But what I think about out there is, uh, two things. One is we have a private, uh, there's a lighthouse building that's a private property in the natural area. We have Oxbow School, Summer of Art, and then we've got the Oval Beach itself. So I would think the city would want to be in a position to make sure we notify the deems who own the Oxbow, who own the lighthouse, as well as the Oxbow management, to make sure they understand that there's going to be some studies going on. Drones flying around with, with people they don't know are, can tend to raise a little bit of concern. So I think that we just, we should notify people this is going to be happening and what is going to benefit and how it's being done. Also too, from, um, is there any FAA requirements that you have to comply with? I, I just think about, I, I see the 2,000 feet max ceiling. Is there anything that we need to be concerned about from municipality about the FAA being aware of this?
Uh, yeah, that's a very good question. The FAA is aware of this. We actually already have a certificate of authorization to operate, uh, in some defined areas over Lake Michigan up to 2,000 feet and the, in the near coastal environment. I'm happy to share those documents with the city if you'd like to review them. But we, we were proactive about pursuing the airspace access because, because of the fact that we weren't sure exactly where we, we would be flying from. We have two broader areas, uh, one of which covers this, this particular region.
Excellent, thank you.
Have, have you done this kind of work before with these kind of drones? Are you, you guys are familiar with this kind of work?
Yes, very familiar. Uh, we have two here on campus, uh, called the Integrated Remote and In situ Sensing Program, which has deployed these systems all over the world, actually. This particular aircraft that we're talking about, we've been operating since 2018. We've spent hundreds of flight, flight hours operating this aircraft, uh, in Texas, in Colorado, in Oklahoma, and Michigan and Wisconsin, actually not Michigan, but Wisconsin as well. We also operated it into the Central Arctic Ocean off of an icebreaker for about six months. So we have a lot, a lot of time with this aircraft and a lot of experience with it.
The reason why I'm asking is you might already have, and I don't know if you have it, but, um, would you also provide some kind of signage? I know you're only going to be there for a couple of days so that, um, to, uh, to, uh, Russell, Russ Gardner's point, you know, just so folks know for the day that what you're doing when they do go to the beach, a lot of people aren't going to know. They don't watch our meetings. Most of the people aren't even from Sagatuck, that'll probably be there that day.
Gregory, to your point, if I may, the, it's more than a couple of days, it's all in July. This is incorrect, I believe on the, on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the agenda, it says July 30th to August 1st. But when you read their information, it's June 30th. So I believe it's the whole month of July.
Okay, sorry about that.
Am I correct in that it's the whole month and we just have it wrong on here?
Yeah, I apologize, I should have said July 1st.
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So, so, so it is important to know, and, and if I, I'm sorry, I didn't want to jump the line. Um, what other, what other states or countries are you doing this in? What makes it, you know, like Michigan, um, what makes you want to use, uh, the, our, our beach? I'm curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. Well, first to confirm the dates, it is for the month of July. We are planning to fly roughly 24, 31 days in the month, uh, depending on the weather conditions and days that are interesting. With regard to signage, we're happy to provide that. I can provide some examples from previous projects where we provide signs that we can put up where needed as the city determines, uh, to make sure people are aware. We also would make sure that we're visible to anyone who is walking down to this part of the beach and that, you know, we can have good communications with any people walking that way. With regard to why we're operating in this part of the state, a lot of this comes down to this particular project, which is supported by the, the U.S. National Science Foundation. It, it is focused specifically on severe weather over the Lower Peninsula of Michigan and the development of thunderstorms in that part of the country. And so the, the, um, over lake environment actually plays a substantial role. The, the lake breeze and its, uh, kind of progression inland during the course of the day creates a convergence zone between that, that wind pattern and, and the background winds that can help to enhance thunderstorm development. Uh, it also changes the types of particles that go into clouds and lead to rain formation. And so, uh, that's why we're looking at this region specifically. The, the aircraft operations that we're talking about were added to a second iteration of the, the proposal that went to the National Science Foundation because of the fact that the scientific community decided that that lake environment was so important. The previous version of this project didn't have any way to get measurements out over the lake, which is where the aircraft come into play. And that's why we're, why we're engaged with this. There is a larger transect of measurements that extends inland from the coast. And so that's not our aircraft, but there are land-based systems that are taking measurements, basically heading straight east from Sagatuck and Holland, uh, and collecting data along the, the line where this kind of lake interference and lake interaction occurs and, and the thunderstorms really start to kick off as they move inland.
Thank you.
I appreciate what you're doing. I, I think it's important work. Has anyone from your team been to our beach in July and the area that you're proposing?
I, I can tell you that I have been there, uh, not in July. I, I went there last fall, uh, in October. I recognize it's a very different time of year. I believe that the PI, uh, Dr. Keeler from Central Michigan has been to the beach in the summertime. We all recognize it's a very popular beach, it's busy. Um, and we certainly want to minimize our impact on, on the activities of people visiting the beach, which is why we're exploring the option of operating farther to the north. And, and I'm definitely a little bit, uh, uh, at the, the kind of, well, I, I'm relying on, on you all as, as the local, uh, community to tell me whether that's a reasonable idea or not. But I, I hope that that northern area is less crowded.
No, well, that, that, that's why I asked the question because I'm, I'm happy to kind of give you some information on the crowds and the boaters that are there in that area. You know, slide 48 says you're looking for a 100 to 200 yard flat region with space on both sides for approach and climb out in case of a. Um, you know, slide 48 says you're looking for a 100 to 200 yard flat region with space on both sides for approach and climb out in case of a go around. It also says we'd like to try to find an area where we could manage movement by people not participating in the activity during the landing phase of the flight. Um with all due respect, I think you're going to have a lot of conflicts with visitors and boaters in that area. Um I don't think it would go well for anyone involved. Once again, I can't speak on behalf of another property or another property owner. Uh there is an area that would seem to meet your requirements in the North Shore Development that's currently not developed. It's been the source of a lot of litigation, but it is a flat area. It's basically the site of the old Village of Singapore. It's basically the site of the old um Dennis and Boat Works. My polite suggestion would be to approach that developer and see if 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 this research work could occur there. Uh I I'd be very concerned about the amount of conflict you'd have with our residents and our thousands of visitors that we have to that area in the summer, to be honest.
So you think there would be conflict all the way up by the pierhead?
Yeah, I I I I do. It's getting more and more popular. People, you know, when Oval Beach gets uh crowded, people now will hike out there, fishermen hike through there. Um, you know, there are people that like to sunbathe in the dunes and, you know, just to get away from the crowds. Um and and I'm struggling to find, other than the beach itself, a 100 to 200 yard flat region with space on both sides uh for for the go around. But on the other hand, the the former Dennis and Yacht Facility, that that basin where where the developer wanted to put in the marina sort of fits that bill quite well. But once again, I can't speak for them, but it would be in your area of operation that you're looking at. I I'm just, you know, we we on certain days, we see a lot of boaters that will anchor uh all along that area. Uh you know, we do it frequently.
Especially in July.
Especially in July. Um so I I think uh your team might be surprised by uh the number of uh people around. Uh that's, I guess that's all I'm trying to caution you on. Um and I I I think you would have a very difficult time enforcing the curiosity factor of, you know, everybody has to move away now. Th- this drone's coming in. Uh I think it could be very stressful for your team, actually, to do that, to be honest.
And then north of that channel, what you're talking about, that property, um nobody uses that beach. You know, when I'm out there boating, I very seldom see anybody use that.
I'm I'm referring to the area to the north of the Cove.
Yeah.
Where it's, it's, it is a flat area where where the old uh yacht manufacturer was that was going to be the source of a
The trees where the trees have been cut down, where the marina was going to be.
Yes, it's kind of a flattened area right to the north of the Cove. Um, once again, that's in the township, that's owned by the North Shore Developer. Uh, you know, I don't know what their appetite is for a project like this. But I I I just worry based on, you know, kind of what your aspirations are on slide 48, uh that you will not run into conflicts with uh residents and visitors to our our beach and our natural area.
That could near the
Ice can speak to, Ice, you you've talked with North Shore. That was your original.
I thought that's
That was his ideal location.
Saw something on North Shore.
Yeah, so they've they've met with North Shore and that was and I I saw what you kind of explain, I guess, why that
Yeah, so thank you, Ryan. I we did meet with North Shore. Um they were receptive to having a conversation. And they did actually reach out to their residents. And unfortunately, there were one or two who objected and that that was the end of it. Um so they they said that while generally the the response was favorable, there were one or two who were relatively adamant that they did not want to see this happening within the gates of the North Shore Development. And so uh unfortunately, that pathway is not available to us. I'm I'd be happy to try to reopen it, but my sense is that uh it's very challenging. I I don't want to put the developer in a place where he is trying to convince his residents uh of of a specific activity that has already been voted down.
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, I I get that. And I saw them on here, but I didn't I didn't know if things were completely closed to them.
I guess what I'm just trying to get to is you're, you know, you're looking at if you're arriving at 7:00 AM. That's when you would launch the drone, I would assume, like shortly thereafter, early in the morning. But then you might be landing at a time when the the beach might be fully, you know, a lot of people walking up and down that stretch. So I guess I I I'm asking what is needed to be able to land your devices?
Sure, yes, I can give a little bit more of an overview there. So uh a couple of things. So you're you're right. Initially, we would be arriving early on uh where things are likely to be more quiet. This particular aircraft flies for about two hours at a time. And so uh we're planning to conduct generally three flights a day. Uh if it's a very active weather day of particular interest, it might be four flights. But um there would be, you know, three to four instances where we are looking for some free space. The 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 aircraft, the primary aircraft that we're trying to operate is called the Raven. It's a fixed wing aircraft that you can see in the photographs here. Um uh normally, we launch it with a pneumatic car top launcher. That that wouldn't be the case for this campaign. We would switch to a bungee launching system with a with a very um extensive bungee that can accelerate the aircraft for takeoff. And then it's a belly lander. So you can see in the right-hand photograph there, the aircraft being landed uh by our pilot. This was in a campaign in Barbados a few years ago where we were also operating from a beach setting. The space that I indicated, you know, the aircraft doesn't need 200 yards to land, but obviously it's moving uh with a speed of approximately 40 miles an hour. And it it needs a little bit of space for approaching and and for for leaving the beach in case the aircraft has to go around. So we like to have some space available for that. One other thing I'll say is that we do have a second aircraft that we're working to procure right now, which is actually a multi-rotor aircraft. So this is a vertical takeoff and landing system. It's made by a company in Michigan in in Grand Rapids called uh Intermet Systems. And they, that aircraft requires a much smaller footprint, which is why we're specifically trying to get it in case uh we need to operate from a smaller footprint. Uh it's a more traditional-looking drone, as people might envision it. It's a quadcopter type of system. It can still collect vertical profiles of the variables that we're interested in. Uh but it has a much shorter flight time, so there would be more takeoff and landings throughout the day. That's kind of the trade-off there. Um but if, you know, if the space is a really big concern and and we just, there's no chance of seeing kind of a 100-yard space that we can clear for landings, this other system would allow us to take off and land in a much smaller area and and take off and land vertically as, you know, a a traditional kind of commercially available drone would, that that people are likely familiar with.
How close do you need to be to the lake?
That's what I was gonna say.
To be to be effective. I mean, do you need to be right kind of on the waterfront to to be able to do what you're trying to accomplish?
Um the the biggest thing for us is that we have to be able to see the aircraft. And so we definitely do not need to be right on the water as long as we have a clear line of sight to the water and we can track the aircraft out to the lake. And then during its flight over the lake, um we're not looking to operate very far over the water, about a about a kilometer or so offshore, which gives us plenty of good visibility there. But um that's the biggest constraint for us because it's an FAA requirement that we maintain line of sight with the aircraft.
It seems like if you could have maybe one spotter, you could go more inland. I mean, if, you know, establish, you know, people to keep the visual contact, but be further from the lake so that, you know, you can still get to the lake and be over the lake, but not have to launch from right at the lake. I don't know if that's, that might be a really bad idea, but
Well, I guess I'm, I mean, if I'm understanding him correctly, the spotter also needs to be the controller, so you need somebody with line of sight for landing and takeoff. If I'm understanding you correctly, as opposed to like la- launch and I'll and I'll take it from here and then it can go back to say, you know, the old drive-in movie theater kind of out in the township and land there. You know, I I don't know how it operates, but I'm assuming you need line of sight for launch and recovery.
Um, we do need line of sight for launch and recovery, but the aircraft operator can be where the aircraft is launching and recovering. Um the the flight operation, once the aircraft takes off, the aircraft is operated under an autopilot that's controlled from a laptop. So it's not as though somebody is manually flying the aircraft uh during the whole flight that needs to be able to see it. Um we can have a spotter that can get the aircraft out over the lake. That is possible. Uh I think the big challenge that we've encountered in this area in particular is that much of the lakefront uh has significant vegetation where maintaining that line of sight as the aircraft traverses from, say, a field that's uh, you know, a little bit inland to to the lakeshore is really challenging just because there's significant amount of tree cover in that area. Uh but I'm I'm certainly happy to look at options um with with anyone who's willing to to share their knowledge of the area. We're we're certainly open to exploring whatever is possible.
I wonder if any of the local realtors would know of, you know, big enough chunks of land for sale, you know, maybe south of here, that would be closer to the, you know, close enough to the lake. It should, I mean, it seems like there's
Well, yeah, I think there are. I mean, you know, it'd be handy if you had kind of somebody with local knowledge because, you know, off the top of my head, I'm thinking, was it an old drive-in theater on Blue Star Past, The Guardian and all that? Okay, yeah, so that's that's an old drive-in theater, which I think has a huge field behind it. So I don't think it's been built up at all.
But doesn't it have to be closer to the water?
Well, that's what, that's what I don't know. And that I'm, that's why I'm probably a bad
And and I thought we were, I thought we were um considering also Sagittar Dune State Park.
Yeah.
Because it was a lot less crowded um to consider that area. Was that not decided if that was a a good area to launch from?
I I don't recall if that was, Ice, can you speak to that?
Obviously, it's a longer haul from a parking spot, but um
I I remember we, you know, it's been a little while since we had the initial discussion. And I know Scott, Ice and I had looked at a lot of different uh suggestions uh for Ice, and he, I know he looked at a lot. State Park was that?
We did discuss the state park a little bit. Um what I remember of that area, and I don't have beyond the map that's that's shared on Zoom right now. I don't have the detailed map up. But I remember, as was mentioned, it being quite a haul to get from anywhere with a vehicle to to a coastal area. And I'm not sure what the path network is like and whether that's a reasonable thing to try to do on a daily basis with, you know, what would likely equate to a couple hundred pounds of equipment.
Two mile round trip.
Okay, so then the other question is, if you are parking at Oval Beach, are you needing the launch space to be like close to where you're parking or can you walk all the way down to the pier?
Yeah, they're putting this on a like a wagon and then pulling it to there where they need to launch.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, yeah. And I don't, I don't want to give you guys suggestions and I don't want to speak on behalf of other property owners. I don't, I I don't know if you've approached the people that run the the dune rides, you know, that's close to the lake. They've got trails that, you know, four-wheel drives can get very close to the lake. And there's, it's also very high up in places. So there's line of sight. I don't know if it's good for landing or not. And once again, they're in, they're in a business to make money. I don't know that they even be remotely interested in this. But um I I I guess where I'm coming down, and I'm sorry, I really support what you're doing. I think it really does take away from our tourist business and kind of why people go to the beach to kind of get away and relax. I mean, people are annoyed enough as it is when people are flying drones, to be honest. Um I I, once again, I love the, I love what, I love the mission. I love the science behind this. I like how you've got the educational component built in. And it's, it's very innovative and cool, but I just, I honestly don't think it's a good fit for for our our kind of beachfront community, to be honest with you.
Anyone else?
I'm actually on quite where Councilmember Dean is on this. I love the concept. I totally agree with it. I think if I'm hearing the issue that's being raised or the concern that's being raised is that this work will impact the use of the beach by our visitors. Right? Is that, is that the primary?
I think it also, for some, it might change their beach experience.
Yeah. So maybe to that point, Ice, is there any way to maybe make the schedule in such a way that, and again, it's weather dependent, but to try to make this at a least used time, early morning, later in the day, on weekdays, weekends are, I I said weekends would be out just because of the use and the cleanup and everything that has to be done out there. I mean, I'd like to see if you figure out a way to make this work. I I I guess I'm just not, you know, this isn't going to work. I just wonder if there's maybe some, and I know you've had a lot of conversations. Yeah, is there another time that you could potentially be doing it?
Um, thank you for the question. So yes, I'm I'm happy to be as flexible as we can be with when and how we operate. Um having said that, I think there is a specific need to have regular observations as the day is developing, right, and as the lake breeze is developing and impacting the the advancing of the storms. But certainly what's what's being discussed, um we want as much as anyone else to minimize the impact on on others who are who are around and who are using this particular property. Um if there's a discussion to be had about when or when we can or can't fly the Raven versus the smaller, you know, copter system, or whether there's a different location that if we're if we're not requiring this big extensive area for a copter, whether there's a different coastal location that could potentially work that would not impact the beach visitors, um we're, we are all ears to to having those conversations and and trying to discuss our options.
I think a lot of us would probably love to see maybe some video of you, this approach and, you know, how how big of an area that it actually impacts and what that looks like. Um, you know, a lot of us just want to see what it looks like as far as the impact and how noisy. Yeah, it's a great point.
And you, I'm sorry, but does it have to be July?
It it does have to be July. Yes, that that part is very fixed and all of the other assets are also uh going to be on the field during that time period. Um I I'm happy to share some additional uh videos of of takeoffs and landings with with the group. Um that's, that's no problem. I actually was just quickly trying to dig them out on my laptop as we're talking here. But uh it may take me a second to do so, or I can share them with with Ryan and he can pass those along if that would be better.
Would you all be interested in that, just to see what it looks like as it's landing and taking off? Okay, yeah, we would appreciate that if you could share that with Ryan, if you could share with the rest of the council.
Absolutely.
So uh for council's purpose, so yeah, we'll get those videos to you and, you know, and we'll have this as an agenda item on Monday, give you a chance to look at the videos, think about it some more. You know, on Monday, you can either give a yes or no, or if you, you know, need more time. I mean, obviously, there, you know, a lot of, begin this research uh next month, so they they do need some direction soon. So maybe Monday would be a good, good time to kind of give them an ultimate decision. And Ice, maybe you'll know a little bit more then too from your folks on maybe if that that's smaller or that newer option is maybe uh uh going to be a reality and maybe if need be, limiting your requests to that.
Yes, thank you. And I I can tell you that on the smaller option, um it is in the procurement phase right now. We we have paperwork underway to procure this. Uh the company is aware of the fact that we're moving forward with that purchase. And in fact, we would be doing uh the the pickup as part of that initial part of the campaign uh in in late June or early July in Grand Rapids. So that is moving forward, um but it's it's not a system we have in our hands at the moment.
Okay.
Well, I think it's important work. Um it's important research. Um I think we want to try to work with you in some way, but we just need a little bit more information, just a little bit more time, I think, um before we can move forward with a decision on that.
And props for figuring out how to name it Mitten, so.
Yeah, that I can, I cannot take any personal credit for that one. That's all.
Clearly, the those um the Michigan University figured out how to make that work.
Yes.
All right, if there's nothing else, we can move on.
Thank you.
Ice, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 6D Waste Services Agreement. It's on page 51 of your packet.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um so since 2008, the, well, back in 2008, the the city amended its garbage and rubbish ordinance and and kind of went to an exclusive uh waste hauler for certain uh types of waste. Um and and at that time, did a a full bidding process and and ultimately selected Chef Container to to be the uh single waste hauler. Since that time, Chef Containers, you know, merged with Republic and and Republic is now now serving you. So um their last agreement was for for five years. It's set to expire on October 1st. So I wanted to kind of touch base with the council and see what your preference is and whether you uh like to negotiate another extension uh of the agreement with Republic or uh seek competitive bids. Uh the city of Village Douglas uh went out for bid um uh last year. Uh Republic came in much lower than the uh uh competitive bidder, uh Arrow Waste. Um I I have had some, you know, preliminary discussions with Republic that, you know, ultimately if they're uh the the provider uh in the future, you know, are they willing to to switch to, you know, twice monthly recycling pickup? I know that's been raised by a number of folks and you discussed it at your, I think, your strategic planning meeting. Uh they are willing to do that. Um but wanted to touch base. Yeah, do you want to negotiate another extension, see competitive bids? And then if, you know, it's a, either way, what are your priorities uh that you that are important to focus on in that discussion?
All right, go ahead, Holly.
Is Arrow Waste the only other provider? I mean, is there only one other provider? I mean, is there only one other provider or are there others?
I, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Waste management is also on the market as well.
Okay.
So, did, did you have any preliminary discussions on frequency of recycling with them, what they, what they could support?
Yeah, they, they can do twice monthly pickup.
They can do twice monthly.
Yep, okay, yep.
That's what Republic can do.
Republic can do, yes, yep.
So.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, there was two items on there that I wasn't sure about. What is bulk at thirty-five dollars a month? Is that like, just if you have something or are you going to be charged that like? I don't, like, do they come and pick up a sofa for you or whatever if you call in advance? And is that just a charge if you use it or does everybody have to pay that?
Is it a charge to use? Like, I understand, like, some folks will put out, like, mattresses or those kinds of bulk items. They have to have, like, a bulk tag or. It's my understanding, um, and a few times that it's come up.
That would be kind of new and interesting and I like that, that would alleviate some, I don't know, I don't know if it's new, but I, like, I don't know about it. And so right now, a lot of people just wait for the DPW to come the, once a year, but it might be nice to take offload some of that. And yeah, if you've got a mattress or something big that you need to get rid of and you can contact them for a one-time. Deal, so that, okay, so you don't have to pay that. That's just a, it's, it's a user fee if you need it.
The other things that I think would be, it'd be great if we could, um, get composting and I don't know if any of them do composting, but we're. Pretty behind, but I mean, I think Michigan in general is behind. Uh, where a lot of other states are in terms of composting. And then also, is there a way, and this came up. Actually, when I was canvassing, uh, when I was running for office, was if we can negotiate on behalf of the businesses as well as residents. So that we can, um, use our purchasing power to get better deals for them. And I don't know if that's possible, but wanted to raise that.
Right, any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor Mayor, um, to that point, um, just want to make sure that this is currently just a residential agreement. And I think there's some restriction on being able to extend this out to the commercial, but I, I agree, it's a good question to ask. So the only things I've heard is the twice a month recycling collection, which sounds like the Republic's open to that and the timing of the pickups. That's something that's always been a, you know, it's like deliveries for the food companies, refuse pickup. Um, always seems to be disruptive to people and so forth. But anyway, I'm not sure there's much we can do on that front. The other thing that would. That I would really suggest we do is we ask our, we ask our residents, you know, what, what are the things that you'd like to see from this, from the city? With this exclusive arrangement, assuming we continue down this path, you know, what, what's the other feedback that people might have, you know, what are the things, maybe it's just as simple as the service hours? And it's the twice a month pickup. That may be all that people are interested. I'd just be interested to hear what people might have to say from a. Man on the street.
I'd be curious to know also with the hazardous waste collection, what that includes, how often it would be. Is it styrofoam? Is it, you know, what, what they include in ex-fluid? It didn't, didn't go into any details on that. But, um, again, that'd be another thing that could, uh, be offloaded from the city, having to, uh, fund any of that. I, I like the idea of having a, a different contractor doing that instead of us.
So are you in favor of, uh, like sending something out to our residents to, um, have any kind of a survey on what? Needs they might have before we either put it out for bid or ask Republic?
Yeah, if you want a, a survey to go out to kind of.
Well, you're asking if you wanted residents input, so I just.
Any kind of real simple feedback, right? What, what, what is it that you'd like to see improved service-wise for the city for refuse collection with this agreement coming up for negotiation?
That wouldn't hurt and that's a task that wouldn't take too long to do.
Right, yeah, do a survey.
Right, to put a monkey's together, little survey thing together and, and get it out there. And, uh, you know, let folks know that we want to hear from them about this. I think that's a great idea.
And so then, once we have a list of some of the things that we would like to see in our service provider, um, then would, are we thinking we want to send this out to bid? Um, to other, um, besides Republic, Arrow Waste, Waste Management? That's the question, right?
That's the question. Bidding, but it sounds like, you know, I hate to waste time too, you know, um, but, uh, it sounds like, uh, everybody's much more expensive. We're just going for price. Um, but, uh, I think, I, I think maybe we should wait until after the survey to find out what we want. Um, you know, maybe there might be some, you know, input from some of our residents that may have something to do with the services we're looking for, so.
So the drop dead deadline on this is October first?
Yeah, October first and it'll take. Sometime, I, I, I understand from the, the last time that, uh, it took a while to kind of negotiate that extension. I mean, we, we certainly have at least. What, you know, the bid to Douglas was and knowing what their rates are to, as far as a, a negotiation goes of the, the extension route.
To me, the biggest thing is that bi-weekly or bi-monthly, um, recycle pickup that has.
People don't like them.
Yeah.
But it only once a month.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, right.
As if you miss it, like I often do.
And, 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 uh, some of the rental homes do as well, if they miss.
I have two recycle bins.
Yeah.
We go through stuff.
Clearly, that's a, that's a requirement of the community. I feel.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad that they've agreed to do that.
Personal reaction is, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if Chef or anyone's going to be offended if we, if we get bids. I mean, that's kind of just. Common practice, so I'm not terribly concerned about doing that. We have time.
Yeah.
You know, just. Yeah.
I just think getting, getting more bids just makes us like, uh, more diligent.
Yeah.
And.
I see no harm, I, I see no harm in it, yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting yet to see what their capabilities are and.
Yeah, they might not, you know, the other companies not, might not be capable of doing recycling to us twice a month, so we just have to find those.
Yeah.
Things out.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else?
The consensus that you want bids?
I don't see the harm. Does anyone, I mean, is, is it onerous on staff to put out a bid, that, a bid package? I mean, it's.
This will be a fairly lengthy bid, uh, the package to put together, but I mean, I, I'll probably ask Douglas for theirs and then, you know, update it.
Is there any way to find out, um, you know, the bare minimum of things that we're looking for if those? Other companies even offer those? And if they don't.
Yeah, if someone's not going to do. Pickup on recycles except for monthly, forget it. Like, that's, that's a huge, to my mind.
Yeah, we've heard so much from so many.
I mean, I've already had the survey results in my ear on that. People, people want recycling.
Yeah.
You know, frankly, every week.
Every week, that's what I was thinking.
So is that a phone call that you could easily make with Arrow Waste to say, hey, can you do twice a month recycling? And if they say yes, then.
Arrow Waste was so much higher than Republic. I mean, it was like, I don't know why.
Right.
I don't know why we would bother with that when.
Waste management is the other?
Yeah, I mean.
Is there another one I'm missing?
I thought Republic was like a break off of waste management.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, well, I think that, allied, it's allied waste.
Oh, allied.
Is it, do we get breaks because they serve both Douglas and us? And I don't know who serves the township. I mean, does that help with the rates because their trucks are already out here?
I, I would suspect that's part of it. And if you're going out to bid and it's a different hauler, then obviously they're going to make sure that they're. They're staffing up and having, you know, the, the trucks and the infrastructure to. Um, obviously, you know, new trash receptacles potentially, or are they going to be transferred in some way? And how does that, that work? I mean, till. Uh, we'd have to work through those, those pieces, um, you know. Negotiated extension route, we would negotiate, hopefully have an agreement before, yeah, and, and about, or. October first when it expires and hopefully they start that new, if they know, especially if they know, like, twice a month recycling is coming, which they, they do if. If this is what, you know, the desire to continue with them, then they can kind of start planning for that too and hopefully have that sooner rather than later as well.
Go ahead, Jean.
Um, I think one of the biggest calls I get about recycling is obviously they want it twice a month, but it's on random days. There's no set schedule like your trash pickup.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's trash day.
So it is, it's just.
Every, like every four weeks. Four weeks and they publish those weeks in advance and you put your cycle out.
It's on the same day, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's like every fourth week.
Every fourth week is.
So it's not like the first, it's not the first Monday of the month.
They ask me for that schedule because it's not like.
I have to look it up every, I have to look it up.
Every second Tuesday.
No, 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 so it's, it's every fourth Monday morning and, and so.
I understand.
Yeah.
But you have to actually look up the date.
We're not all as organized.
Just weird, it's like, says she who's missed it.
If it was the first Monday of the month, that would be helpful.
That is why residents are like, they're so confused about.
Right.
Because it's different every single month.
Month, so they're like, when is, when is the pickup this?
I, I, I look it up on our city website every single time.
That's just a concern I get.
It's, it's, it's valid. I'm looking up and down the street to, to go with the pack. I'm like, is the, is the rest of the pack putting theirs out? Okay.
Is it time?
I've got one neighbor who I know knows. I'm like, okay, yeah.
Realty has that on the refrigerator of our rentals and it shows the date of, for those recyclers.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it's confusing.
But you've got a really good point. It should be like the first, the second, or the third Monday or whatever, but the same day of the week. Yeah, I'd like to shoot for that too.
I mean.
Whatever to do.
Would it help you to have just like maybe one more conversation with your peers in Doug, in Douglas and the township and say, look, you, you know, they, they've told me they're bidding. This is what they got and, you know, we, we can do the bid package, but it's just going to be a, frankly, a waste of time because nobody else was even close. I mean. Is, I hate to add, work to staff where we know what the conclusion's likely to be. You know, I, I don't want to, this onerous bid process just for.
I agree.
This, just for the sake of it, you know, if, if like Douglas is like, yeah, nobody else had the capabilities, nobody else was even close. Because we're, we're comparable, I would say, in a lot of ways. You know, there's not a lot of difference.
Well, yeah, and I don't know when the last time the township may have kind of bid, I can find out about that. Like I said, Douglas is fresh, they, they just did recently and, and it was, like I said, it wasn't. Really, you know, close. I mean, certainly you could negotiate with Republic, you know, I mean, obviously we want to negotiate in good faith, but if they're like coming in at dramatic numbers or something like that, you're like. Sorry, we got, you know, open this up and go to bid, but, um, I mean, I know that's always an option that you have, um, we should know that.
Or ask them if, uh, if we didn't bid it, if they would give us any consideration. I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
Worth having that conversation. Okay. Anything else? Do you feel good about the direction that council would like you to go?
Yep.
Okay, all right, then we will move on to item. Six E, start time for council meetings. This is on page seventy-two.
Mayor, back in, uh, early two thousand, oh, yeah, early twenty twenty-three, early last year, there was, uh, some discussion amongst council whether or not to, uh, the, the change to. The seven PM start time for your, um, regular meetings. And at that time, the decision was to, to kind of leave it at, at seven PM. Um, I understand, you know, from you, Mayor, and, and you, Mayor Potem Baldwin, that there was interest in maybe. Some different council members have a, have a further discussion. Um, I did a little researcher. Our, our city's historic district commission holds their regular meetings at six and I, I kind of took a look at surrounding municipalities. It looks like Holland and Denbor are, are starting their regular meetings at six. Uh, Sagatuck Township's, it does as well. Um, Lake Town Township holds one regular meeting at six and another one at, at three PM. Um, which is kind of interesting. They, they have like a, a work session before that in the afternoon. Uh, but then, uh, Douglas is, is at seven PM still, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
My, um, impetus for, for bringing it up was that, uh, it's just, it's better for the staff, that they don't have to be, you know, two meetings a month that they're having to wait until. Seven o'clock to get started. I like to get them in. It's a lot of our meetings run late. I mean, even our workshops run late. And so from my perspective, I, it doesn't matter to me coming in at seven o'clock or six o'clock. I think it's better for the staff and I, and if we can do that. In times of change now, it's not like, you know, back in the, I mean, anybody can be online and watch us and we can record it and watch it and we can participate in any, in any kind of way, even if you had to get home. It gives people time to get out of work in the attendant person if they want to. And, uh, and again, just, it's, it's better for the staff and that was my, the reason for my advocacy on this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really just looking at from a staff perspective and then seeing what all of our surrounding communities, you know, just to do a comparison. Um, a lot of people are, you know, a lot of communities are able to do the six o'clock timeframe. It will depend on, you know, those who have a nine to five job, if, if that's something that we can make work.
Well, I remember, well, I do have a nine to five job, but, um, I'm usually done by five. And I remember discussing this back. In two thousand twenty-three and I was all for the six o'clock. Uh, I just don't like those late nights.
Yeah.
And especially when we have litigation that, you know, that we have to go into closed session, that can last a long time. Um, so I, and I remember Councilman Gardner, uh, uh, saying that, you know, it's hard for him. Because he's driving home after five o'clock, so he's getting here around six o'clock. So I was willing to even go go six thirty. Um, but, uh, but, uh, yeah, I'm all for pushing it up earlier.
How does it work for your schedule, Russ?
Um, I'm still seven.
That, would you?
Yeah, so. My employer is very supportive of this work. They feel this is important for me as an employee. But I do want to try to make sure that I'm not overextending that grace to allow me to be here. So it is sometimes difficult for me to get here at seven, at six o'clock. So, historic district commission's at six, so I have to make that happen. Um, and then, uh, you know, planning commission's at seven, so they're still at the seven. Seven timeframe, so, um, and, yeah, so I'm, I'm still seven is. And I think not just for me, but for the community. That's, that's ultimately what this is about is what's best for the community, so.
What do you think about six thirty? Is that like?
Six thirty is more manageable, seems, yeah, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would love to. Get staff out of here at a reasonable time. Um, but I, I, I'm sort of agnostic on this because I, you know. With the changes post-COVID, I, I'm remote eighty percent of the time. So I don't have the burden that, that either staff or some members of council do, so I feel. Kind of agnostic on this one. I, you know, every little bit helps. I don't, I don't mind. Gregory's. Mr. Councilman Muncy's recommendation of six thirty, if it works for Councilman Gardner. Um, I mean, I, I just don't feel like I've got a dog in this fight. I, but I am very sympathetic to staff. You know, you know, they do have to travel to get home. Um, but I, I want to be fair to everybody, so.
Yeah, it'd be good to, I don't know if Logan weighed in to see what his, I know, um, he is a, you know, have to butts in chairs. Um, job, so I don't think telecommuting is an option for him. I, I would love six. Um, my brain works better the earlier in the day. So, and, and similarly with staff, especially those who've got a bit of a draw, uh, drive, but. Um, you know, I'll make it work. But I do like the idea of asking planning to move up a little bit.
To six o'clock.
Yeah, I think actually that might be able to work and at least we could get one staff, you know, the staff home sooner on those days.
Yeah, I mean. I guess what, you know, what, what does staff, I hate to put you guys in the spot like I always do, but I mean, what's, what's staff's view and thoughts? I mean, I'd, I'd value your, your, your input as well. Because you guys have to get ready for these meetings and then, you gotta lock up and all that stuff, you know. And maybe, maybe, maybe this conversation should be about the workshops too. I mean, you know, what if we went to six thirty on the council meetings and then we went to. Five or six thirty on the workshops? I don't know. I mean, uh, maybe that's crazy. I don't know. I, I, like I said, I'm agnostic on this because my schedule's more flexible than most people's these days.
Jamie, what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I appreciate us looking out for staff, but of course they are also paid employees. Um, and, uh, these are the times that we've had and they know that. Um, so. I think we need to think more about the community and, and the council to make sure that we can get here and, and timely manner to do our job.
I mean, I was tired of. Knowing I had to be at meetings and what time they were and I make it work in my schedule. I also get a lot of work done between five and seven. But I am okay getting out earlier too, because some of the meetings do go long. Uh, I need to be flexible and. Will do whatever we decide.
Okay. I feel like we're just going to keep going round and round on this one. So, as much as, you know, I would, I would love to have them start at six o'clock. They just go, you know, these meetings go really long, so. Being here till nine o'clock at night on, those nights are, are really challenging, so.
I, I would be curious if, uh, if Logan could make six thirty work and it sounds like Russ could, not ideal, but could make it happen. That might be a way to, um, sort of. Split the difference.
Feels like a compromise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, maybe down the road, six o'clock would be something we could, you know, if, if, you know, whoever's on council, if that works for, you know, schedules going forward. Like we said, you know, you can join on Zoom and, you know, I'm talking about the community.
Right.
Right. You know, there's varying ways that the community can join. It's just a matter of, um, council members, if you, you know, what works. Um, for council members who have full-time jobs. Um, so if six thirty could be a compromise to start, it's a half hour. I feel like.
I mean.
I feel like it's a compromise.
Let me, let me think about it.
Okay, so, all right, so I guess we'll move on. Okay. Um. Is everybody all set with that one?
I can see, my only other observation is maybe to sweeten it, maybe we could, you know, bump the workshops to four. And then you don't, you could, you, you know, like you and Logan, you, you work outside of Sagatuck. At least you could get another hour in at the office on Wednesday.
I don't want, oh, you mean to move them to five?
Or, or even five.
Then we're making, now we're making the staff stay even later on and, and two more days of. That doesn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Fair enough. Fair enough.
All right.
I get a lot of work done when no one's calling.
I totally understand that. I do.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to, uh, public comment. Uh, this would be on any items you would wish to speak. You've been patient. So feel free to come up to the podium and state your name and where you live.
Peterson, seven forty-two plus three, and I had that little drone flying around me, Saga Talk, Mayor Stanton and council members. First, I think that the idea of the airport authority becoming an enhanced trail is wonderful. I think it's great. It can be used for our high school track team and other runners. I strongly support it, and I think everybody else does too. I do not support the conservation easement agreement with the O D C because it gives away our, meaning the taxpayers of Saga Talk, authority without public input in some measurable way. I know you feel like you've given many opportunities for the public to weigh in over all of this, especially with the work you've done with the O D C. But in reality, the words conservation easement were not brought up until this past March at a workshop when it was said. The city could potentially place an easement on the property. The first mention, as far as I could tell, at a public works meeting in March was when a remark was made that there would be a donor and a conservation overlay was mentioned. Later March meeting minutes, there was direction by the council to gather information on conservation easements after conversations with donors. I don't know if that information was ever put out. The O D C fifty-page proposal, which I think many people believed was simply a plan to protect against the noxious weeds and trees, had one line about a conservation agreement. That one line was in the newspaper article along with a quote by Councilmember Baldwin, no strings attached to this grant. We retain opportunities to do other things with this parcel. I believe that was misleading. We do not retain opportunities to do other things with a property if it is a conservation easement in perpetuity. Wikipedia says in the United States, a conservation easement is a power invested in a qualified land conservation organization to constrain to a specified land area the exercise of rights otherwise held by the landowner. Again, the taxpayer of Saga Talk, your constituents, to achieve certain conservation purpose. I'm talking fast to get into three minutes. The motion itself does not contain the words conservation easement. This is a big deal. There's no need to rush this. The donor said in the minutes that it doesn't have to require a conservation easement. The money can go, be used to enhance the trail that's already there. Many people don't even know there's a trail there. And then there should be some kind of city input, answered questions, how many acres, what's the value of acres? Will we be able to walk on it? What if we want to do a bathroom? Is it going to limit us that we can't put utilities or roads through there? What are the costs? Every one of us should know those answers. Most of, don't even know there's a trail there. Why don't we have a day where all the public is invited out to that airport authority to see what's there? You can go ahead with movements to, to enhance that trail, but there's no need for conservation easement right now. Because once it's signed and it's in perpetuity, not a farmer's conservation, it's gone. That authority is taken away from us, the citizens of the Saga Talk. Thank you.
Chris?
Chris.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
Jerry Tidaldi, resident of Saga Talk. Do you want the address?
Is that? No.
Okay. Okay, this is my first workshop, and I'm clearly, I'm disappointed that we're talking about all of this money to repair the water lines, or not repair them, but bring them up to date. Eleven million dollars and we're not prepared. I'm disappointed that you are putting that on the backs of our residents. We have plenty on our backs already. My suggestion is that you rein in this, rein in the spending. Sir, I'm sorry, I don't mean to insult you, but I believe this is an attorney. We have attorney's fees. We have all kinds of lawsuits and the potential for more lawsuits. We need to rein it in and get back to basics. Uh, sorry, I was making notes. The city is wholly unprepared for what we're facing, and we need to start paying attention to what's, what our priorities are. Take away the spending that we're, we're, we're spending money frivolously and on things that we don't need. We need the water lines and we don't need to burden our residents with all of these costs. That's pretty ridiculous in my mind. Saga Talk is burning, and some of you are, are fiddling around with short-term rentals and giving away our assets. The airport property, that's an asset. We need money. What are we doing talking about giving it away? It's, it's not appropriate and it's not acceptable. So I hope that you, in the future, consider how much we're spending and how much we are paying in taxes. And rein it in and make it happen. We have, should have budgets, and we have to look at them, and we've got to pare them down to make it all work. Or we will be burning.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Jolie Anadi, seven twelve Aligan. I probably said this thing at several other meetings. I'm going to say it again. I'm ambivalent if, what we do with the property, if you want to turn it into a park, you want to sell it, whatever. But what I am concerned about is I did have a couple of people that in, in the real estate industry have concerns about the easement and some other legalities involved in this park. And the, I want to make sure whatever you do, it's on firm legal footing. So we do not end up in the midst of another lawsuit. We don't need another lawsuit. So that is basically, and then two, I feel, I've heard this vibe before. I would like to see more input from the taxpayers of the city. It's as simple as that. In, in your own minds, you might feel, well, we've given people plenty of opportunities. I question that. I've talked to too many people around town who said they had no idea what was going around. That's not right. Nobody here rules by the divine lights of kings. You are, you are supposed to be here to voice the opinion of the taxpayer. And sometimes that is not already done. I know this from the people that I've talked to, but that's neither here nor there. I believe that we need more public input before any decisions are made. And there should be, I do agree that there should be no rest of judgment. We do have an opportunity to investigate this. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone online wishing to speak? Anyone with your hand raised, online want to speak? None. All right. I don't see anyone else in the audience. Am I missing anyone? All right. So if I could move on to item eight, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
They have to read the whole.
Oh. I'd like to motion to move into a closed session pursuant to M C L fifteen point two six A E and H to discuss the confidential written legal opinion regarding the claim of appeal on appeal from the City of Saga Talk Historic District Commission filed by Maplewood, captioned Maple Hotel Corporation versus City of Saga Talk and City of Saga Talk Historic District Commission, case number two, four dash six, nine, zero, five, nine, dash A A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes. Okay. I'll wait for. I'll look at all of us sitting there. I'll wait till Ryan's back up. All right. Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll try. Motion to accept council's recommendation for moving forward on the matter of City of Saga Talk Historic District Commission filed by Maplewood Hotel, captioned Maplewood Hotel Corporation V City of Saga Talk and City of Saga Talk Historic District Commission, case number two, four dash six, nine, zero, five, nine, dash A A.
Second. All right, any discussion?
A question on the motion, shouldn't it be the attorney's recommendation as opposed to council?
Oh, legal counsel.
Legal counsel, I meant, I meant legal counsel.
All right, are we all right with that clarification?
Can you read it again?
Yeah.
Motion to accept legal councils' recommendations for moving forward regarding City of Saga Talk Historic District Commission filed by Maplewood Hotel, captioned Maplewood Hotel Corporation V City of Saga Talk and City of Saga Talk Historic District Commission, case number two, four dash six, nine, zero, five, nine, dash A A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Yes.
Yes. And this is a roll call.
Oh, no, sorry.
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Yes. All right, you see the correspondence in there, and now on to council comments. If I could start with Holly.
I don't think I have any comments.
Okay.
No comment. Thank you.
None, thank you.
Um, I understand there's going to be some tours of the airport property in the near future. Looking forward to those. I'll hap, happy to participate if, if needed.
Jeans greens and magical things are buy one, get one free at the, our hanging baskets are twenty dollars. Buy one, get one free. Our tomato plants are four dollars. Buy one, get one free. Tried to think of something fun to bring, and that was, so we're selling the rest of our plants there back to the Fuchsia Flower Shop. Come visit.
All right. Thank you.
All right, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
All right, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.